Start, folks. As much fun, yes, as much fun as the Malinois is, we're gonna get started. It being six o'clock, I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, August 16th, 2023. Sherry, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Qualisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Trent Absent, Commissioner Bennett. Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Thank you.
And one at vacancy.
One vacancy. Pledge of allegiance, Mr. Bennett, if you would lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any suggested changes to the agenda, Lucas?
Uh, no.
Okay. Then let's go to public communications. Time set aside for people to speak to the commission about items of city business other than those on the scheduled agenda. And matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission, generally referred to staff or placed on a subsequent agenda, and other than for emergency items, no action can be taken. I have one card for public comment. Mr. Starkweather.
Good evening, fellow, former fellow commissioners, staff, commissioner, not commissioner, council member, rule, audience, people, listening audience. You haven't even started this thing. The, the, I've come here for just one reason. I'm not here to talk about how I'm not there, and I just wanna thank everybody for being part of this process. I think we've had an incredible planning commission that has worked very well together, particularly observing some other commissions or city councils at times. And, and I appreciate the mayor, mayor, I should call it, Chair Qualisi, for, for speaking very eloquently on my behalf and for Judy, twice on my behalf, and I know Jamie supports me as well, but that's, and it's hard, it's hard to go before a board that it's going after somebody and speaking up, so I appreciate that. And I appreciate the staff, they've always been cooperative, and I hope I haven't abused them, as I've been accused. And so I just want to say, this has been an incredibly wonderful experience. I'm gonna miss it, because I'm gonna miss you. Uh, I'll try not to cry. And I enjoyed working with staff, working with Lucas, and I think we all were very diligent about following the code, diligent about listening to people. A couple of things I, I think we should be extremely proud of. At least three times, we've had applicants come in and neighbors and stuff disputing, disputing things, architects disputing, and I think we handled them, we listened to them, we gave everybody a chance to speak, we asked questions of the, of the staff, and we explored it. We made it like a conversation, rather than a, like a trial. And at least three times, we sent them back and said, "You need to get together and solve this problem before you come back to us." And it worked incredibly well, all three times. People came back who were hostile, you know, I remember one time they said, "We tried to meet," and I, they had their kids there, so we couldn't, they wouldn't listen to us or something. When they came back, everybody was like friendly neighbors, and I think we've modeled something here, which is the idea that we oughta get citizens to try to work together to solve problems before they come to us. And sometimes we found technical things were wrong, it forced them to be sent back, but I think that model, the other thing that I, that I have observed, where we've seen in some other bodies, that when the time, the public speaking is done, it goes to the city council, and immediately, you, you have a motion war going on. And thanks to Chairman Qualisi, and I think the rest of us, we always make sure that everybody, can I finish?
Please, go ahead.
We always make sure that everybody gets to speak first. We ask each other questions, we listen, and then we try to come up with a motion that hopefully everybody can go along with. And since I've been on this commission 14 months, there's only been two votes that weren't unanimous. So we sought purposely to reach consensus and to elicit each other, and I think that's a model that we should be very proud of, and I'm proud of. So, I'm proud of you. Now, I'll be back, of course, you know me, I'm a advocate for certain things, particularly affordable housing, and I'm passionate about it, and I will be passionate about it. And so, I look forward to talking to you, 'cause I know you will listen to me just carefully, just like you listen to everybody else. So, thank you.
Well, as you know, any of the citizens of the valley are welcome at these meetings, at, if we have ad hoc committees, they're welcome at ad hoc committee meetings. We are always trying to get the voice of the community, so.
Well, thank you, and I.
Thank you for your service, and don't be a stranger.
Yeah, and thank you, and I think we all, and again, I, not to compliment myself, but the, and the staff, I think we all worked really hard to find out what was best in the common good for Ojai, not a particular group, we never sided with one applicant over another, you know, everybody came in, and this issue came up, actually, I just, I do wanna remind you of this. I was, it was a suggestion about, I spoke up about the rent control and the, the reach code, 'cause I went to Lucas and asked him, "Is this something that's coming before us?" And you said, "No, it's not Title X." And so, I felt like a talk, 'cause they hadn't made the decision. But when the Formula Business Ordinance came, I mean, Lucas reminded Judy and I, we were at a thing, that we probably shouldn't speak. We technically could, 'cause it's legislation, but I agreed totally with Lucas, that we want people to come here and feel that they're gonna get a fair shot regardless of their position, and we're gonna listen to them, and listen to them fairly, unbiased, and start. So, I, I think we just need to keep modeling that, that style of behavior. I appreciate that Lucas advised us that way, and I appreciate we're following it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards for public comment. Is there anyone here present or in the waiting room who wishes to speak on this? Non-agendized items. Sherry?
No.
Okay. I see no raised hands in the audience. Then we will move on. We have no consent items tonight. Disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. Mr. Bennett?
Um, I have no idea who the, who the applicant is, I've never met with him and, or any representative, and I have spent a lot of time with my car parked in front of the vacant lot, trying to figure out how the design that they're coming up with would lay itself out.
Yep.
And that's about it.
No ex parte contacts.
No ex parte contact, and the closest I got to the parcel was the curb.
The other side of the curb, the other side of the sidewalk, yeah.
I have visited the site. I have no contacts with anybody about it.
And same for me. I, I walk by that site at least weekly, including again today, and have had no ex parte contacts. So let's move on to our discussion item, a concept review for a parcel at 608 East Ojai Avenue. Staff?
Thank you, Chair Qualisi and Commissioners. Would you open up the thing? Thank you. So this is a concept review, concept review 23-001, and it's regarding the proposed development of a reservation-only, private, day-use parking lot on a vacant parcel at 608 East Ojai Avenue. The site is a general commercial zone and has a general planned land use designation of commercial, general commercial as well. It's within the thoroughfare corridor overlay, which is the TCO district, as well as the area covered by the East Ojai Avenue Design Guidelines. The role of the planning commission tonight is to provide the applicant with comments and feedback on the proposal and provide an opportunity for public comment. No decision on this concept review item will be made at the meeting this evening. The applicant envisions a day visitors' use that's utilizing private, sorry, day visitors' private parking site utilized kind of as a home base while visiting the city of Ojai. Go to the next slide, please. There are four parking spaces provided for day use, there's bicycle parking provided or proposed, a utility shed, and an abundance of native landscaping, and the site is surround, proposed to be surrounded by a perimeter fence. An additional four parallel parking spaces along the east property line are provided for service vehicles. The site is currently vacant, it's approximately 18,000 square feet, and it's on the north side of Ojai Avenue, perpendicular to East Ojai Avenue, and there are existing commercial uses to the east and west, and residential uses to the north. The general commercial zoning district is suitable for general retail, personal services, hotels, and other commercial uses that provide services to the community, and parking lots, private and public, are permitted uses. The thoroughfare corridor overlay, or the TCO district, includes development standards when proposing improvements within the right-of-way along Ojai Avenue, and this proposal includes maintaining an existing driveway approach that's along Ojai Avenue, and this would be the sole ingress and egress for the site. Pursuant to the TCO, supplemental traffic analysis would be required during the processing of any project on this site. The proposed, or the, the purpose of the East Ojai Avenue Design Guidelines is to influence the character of new development so that the existing qualities of East Ojai Avenue are preserved. These guidelines apply to properties on the north and south sides of Ojai Avenue from Montgomery to Gridley. This, this site is included in that. A little technical thing here, section 10-2.8, 1408 of the municipal code provides development standards for parking lots. These include maneuverability, specific parking space size, drive aisle dimensions, as well as landscaping, and, and lighting, and as proposed currently in this concept review, the majority of the standards are well exceeded, they're exceeded or overly exceeded. The applicant describes the site as enveloped by native trees and plants in a park-like setting, making the parked vehicles not visible or barely visible from Ojai Avenue. Regarding lighting, which is in section 10-2.1408 of the municipal code, the lighting needs to be capable of providing adequate illumination for security and safety, and the lighting that's presented in the preliminary landscape plan complies with the municipal code. Lastly, public art is a requirement in the code, and it's for projects that exceed $300,000. At this time, the site improvements, the cost of the site improvements have not been determined, however, if the improvements exceed this amount, then the applicant will be required to comply with this section of the code and providing public art. And public art, the purpose of that is to enrich and build, to enrich the built environment of the city. We do have the applicant here tonight, if you have any questions that staff can't answer. Turn it over to you now.
Okay. Ms. Murphy, any questions of staff?
I have a question, whether it's staff or the applicant, and that is, I could not determine whether or not the public parking, or the parking which was available, could, was, was going to be first come, first served, was it going to be available online, was it, is it possible somebody could rent it for a month, and so 25, one slot would be gone from the, from selection, and so it's sort of the mechanics of who's it for, and i- is there a sufficient demand that we think that it would be able to support a rental price which the applicant is, would be looking for?
So there are several questions there in your question, and it's, the parking is for day use, it's by reservation, reservation only, and after you're finished with staff, I'll let the applicant speak further to that, if you have further questions regarding how they make the reservation and for how many days perhaps they can make it in a row, whether it's consecutive or not. Again, it's for day use, it's by reservation, it's a private parking lot, not a public parking lot, people will pay to park there, and it's a permitted use, and a design review permit is required, so it's a discretionary permit, and conditions can be placed on it by the planning commission. But it is a permitted use, so whether or not, Lucas will take over if, if I don't answer this sufficiently, I know, whether or not it's something that we feel is needed in the city, I'm, I'm gonna like put a comma there and say, the applicant wants to, is proposing this, and it's his site, and it's a private parking lot, if he wants to propose it, I don't know that it's up to the city to decide whether or not we need it. Is that proper, appropriate answer?
I'll just add that within our use chart, it is a permitted use by design if there's discretion or issues that this body sees, if and when this comes forward as a full application, that can be addressed at that time, so.
Okay.
So are your questions answered?
Yes, I have one more.
Oh, you know, in terms, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt your, Commissioner Bennett, in terms of the price point, any of those pieces, in terms of logistics on how the business operates, I would leave that up to the applicant to respond.
Okay.
And I've given all of my knowledge regarding that anyway, as far as what, from what the applicant has given me in his project description.
I do have.
I think Commissioner Bennett.
One, one question and a comment. You spoke of the cited section of the code as, as controlling, the TCO, I guess, controlling the design or development standards within the right-of-way, that's the public right-of-way.
That's correct.
Okay. Is, is any of this, I, I can't tell from the, from the drawing, how much of this is public right-of-way? I can see the curb.
It would be the.
Ojai Avenue.
It would be the access point only.
Okay.
So the, the ingress.
So we're only talking about the curb cut for a driveway?
Correct. Any part of, yes, and there's only one of those proposed, and it's the existing.
Per code, there's only one ingress and egress point?
Yes.
Right, okay. Okay. I learned one interesting thing about this, I thought this lot had access on Waite Street, but that little tiny thing up there, that little triangle, actually belongs to the gas station, not to this parcel. So there is only, there is only one point of street frontage on this parcel.
That is correct.
Okay, if we don't have any other questions for staff, then let's hear from the applicant. And, uh, welcome, sir, give us your name, and, and also know ahead of time that the lights aren't gonna come on, you're not limited to any particular time span for speaking, because you're the applicant.
Making me nervous over there. Well, thank you for making the time, I appreciate you having a look, Commissioners and Community Planning. Yeah, so, you know, we bought the property about 18 months ago, without any plans for it.
And you are Mr. Balcom?
I'm sorry, yeah, Tug Balcom, I own the property.
Very good.
Uh, live here in town, up on Daly Street. So yeah, we bought the property without any plans for it, and you may have seen me in here quite a bit over the last 18 months, and the intention was really to better understand the community, better understand the commission.
How do things work here?
How do things work? What do people want, what don't they want? And also spend, spend some time with the property, chatting, chatting with folks, neighbors, a lot of neighbors go by, a lot of visitors to Ojai pass by, which was a really incredible opportunity to meet with a lot of people, share some ideas, see what people might like to see there, what they wouldn't want to see there. And I think the evolution of, I think the more knowledge I gained by coming to the meetings and, and listening to folks, the idea really evolved, and I live right up the street, so there's, you know, plenty of projects that I think would be typical of that space, that I just don't think would be great there. It's a really pretty piece of land, and when you pass by, you get a great view of the mountains and the pink moment, and if you're in the residential, it's, you know, it's, it's that, everything on Waite Street is looking basically right at that property. So I really wanted to create something that was, that was great for the community, great for the neighbors, and the city needed. And so the idea that you see is really an evolution of all of that thinking. It's a take on parking that I've never seen before. It was really something that evolved, like I said, over time, and essentially, it was really apparent that parking is needed, you know, I think it's something that the town needs and the town wants. I wasn't necessarily in the business of owning a parking lot, and I did not think that paving that property would be best for Main Street or the community around the parcel. And so, I really wanted it essentially to look and feel like a park. I wanted it to have native plants and a cooling effect from large shade trees, and, you know, put something there that would look and feel really nice for the community, but I had to work within zoning requirements, and so I think all of that really meshed together in what you see tonight. So it is a parking lot, it is a commercial parking lot, paid parking. Like Mara said, the spaces are reserved, so you would potentially be able to go online, reserve your spot, and that's yours for the whole day. The gate has a code, which upon reservation, you'd receive the, the entry code, so you'd be able to drive up, punch in your code, you know that your spot is, you know, parking space number three, and that's your space for the whole day. You can come in and out, and you can leave your car there and know that it's safe, you can go on a hike, you can go on a drive, and you can come back knowing that you have your space in Ojai for the day. The idea really came from speaking to friends that have visited Ojai, family, and a lot of folks that pass by on Main Street there. You know, I think a majority of the daily visitors to Ojai are day trippers, they're not, you know, most of the folks you see on Main Street aren't in hotels, they're just here for the day. And a lot of the feedback that we got was, folks would come up, you know, for, come up late morning, have a bite to eat, do a little shopping, and then not, not know quite what to do next. And if they brought bikes, they were uncertain about leaving them on their car on the street, and they were sort of felt like they wanted to really engage the valley, but didn't really have a home base to do that. And so we thought it would be pretty cool if you could create an environment that looked and felt amazing, and that was your spot for the day, you know it's safe, we'd have it per code fenced off, and like you see there, native plants, and we've even added, just to be a little extra sensitive to the neighbors, we added a walking trail to the setback, so you'll have the four parking spaces in the center of the property, and then around the perimeter of those parking spaces is a, a walking trail that's all along with native plants, and, and what we really wanna do is recreate trails that you might see here in Ojai. Some of those trails aren't accessible to everybody, so whether it's kids, school kids, or ADA folks.
This is flat ground, at least.
It's flat ground, and you have an ability to go through, and, you know, all of the materials we plan on using, local fieldstone, local plants, so, you know, to the best of our abilities, we want it to really feel like you're on a little trail in the side country, you know, feel like you're somewhere between a park and a hike, and that's your home base for the day. So that's the plan for it, and really look forward to hearing your thoughts.
Okay, any questions?
Uh, oh, yes.
Before, before, I'm sorry, before we start, I'm, I'm curious how you make this work as a business, but also, I believe, whether it works or not, as long as what you're doing is legal, it's none of our business, how you choose to run this business, right? Isn't that, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Please, go ahead, Judy.
Um, you indicated that there would be four spaces for cars, and I believe four more spaces for service vehicles. Could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, so if you look at the site plan, there, there are, you should have two, one without the vegetation overlay is a little bit easier to see. The four main parking spaces, if you can imagine the car pulling into the driveway, they're all on the left, so you'll see four.
Two shown.
Open spaces, two of them have vehicles in them. Those are the, the spaces that will be the core of the business, so there will only be parking for four cars, that's it for the day. The four additional spaces, if you go directly behind, straight back, behind those parked cars, we just, we had room there, and the parking standards talk about loading or service spaces, and the plan was, we could either increase that setback and, and give it more garden landscaping-type feel, and we decided to plug in room for four spaces there, so if I go by during the day, or landscaping goes by, there's a spot for them to pull in, but those four spots will not be part of the business model, it's just open, extra space. You know, some of the other uses that we see for this are, are, you know, emergency staging and, and different community uses, and so we just thought having that space there made sense. That could be two spots, it could be one spot, it breaks up pretty nicely into four parallel spots, but certainly as a business model, any cars parked there, the more, you know, more than one car certainly, I think, takes away from the value of the people that paid to be in the other parking spaces.
You have to provide quite a bit of backup space between the others, anyway.
Exactly, it, so that's, the plan is, is rarely, if ever, to have vehicles parked there. It is not additional parking, so if you purchased one of the spaces for the day, it is not for two vehicles, it is one vehicle only, and those are really maintenance. You know, my missus and I plan to run the business day-to-day, so we plan on being down there as often as possible, somewhat as hosts to the space. So that's, I, I'd pull in and park there, but the idea is, we had the space, let's use it, it's there if we need it, but it certainly is not part of the, I guess, business model, if you wanna call, we won't be charging or commercially using those spaces in any way.
Okay. You, you mentioned that there would be a walking trail. Is there access to the public to use it as a walking trail?
Um, not on the days that we're in business. The whole space will be fenced and gated. However, we're really excited to work with, you know, one of the ideas that we had is to be a really wonderful space for a classroom to come down and walk the trail, maybe we keep it closed on a Monday or a Tuesday for some classes to come down and experience the space, and, you know, we live in the neighborhood, so certainly if, if there was, if the neighborhood needed or wanted access to that at a particular time, or if we had community days where people were, were welcome to come through and have a look, we're certainly not opposed to that. But I think a lot of the value in sort of answering, you know, a, a little answer to your question about the business model, I think, you know, a lot of the value comes from having a fair amount of privacy, a fair amount of quiet space and quiet space around you. So the plan is, is not ever to pack people in there or have, I guess, random folks coming through there, it's really meant to be somewhat private for the people that have paid to be there for the day. But, you know, we, like, we've enjoyed the last couple of Fourth of Julys there, so, you know, a few times throughout the year. know, a few times throughout the year, if, you know, oh, you better believe we'll open our doors. Yeah, we're, I, you know, we're really proud of the idea, and I think once the landscaping matures and it's all in, I, I think we'd be more than happy to share it with the community in, in any way that made sense.
Thank you.
That's it. Jamie, any questions?
You know, what time do you see yourself closing?
You know, we're assuming our customers are, our latest customers are gonna have dinner and then leave, so, you know, we plan just a parallel Ojai business hours. So I think most, most restaurants and, and retailers are closed by eight or nine at the absolute latest. The intention is for absolutely no overnights. I really don't want to deal with people being there late, so I, I, you know, I imagine in the summer, when the days are the longest, nine would, would be our, our closing time. And, you know, if we had a customer that, we're in town for a special event, we're not leaving till 10:30, can we just leave the car there till, till we're ready to go? It, it might be a special consideration, but, you know, everything will be locked up and closed and, and dark skies compliant, you know, after nine or so, probably much earlier in the winter on our shorter days. The, you know, part of the business plan is, is to stay pretty close to our customers. I think there's a lot of opportunity to share a lot of great things about Ojai when they visit, so we're really looking forward to sort of sending people off to experience the greatest parts of Ojai. And I think in that, you know, we'll have a dialogue with most of our customers, and, you know, by way of, of, of how we'll set up the reservation system, I think you'll get a, you'll get a very clear outline of what we expect and don't expect of you while we're there. And, you know, of course, this is a new idea, so however the business evolves, we'll, I'm sure we'll have to make adjustments, but, you know, people hanging out late is not something that I, I, I go to bed early, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to have to wake up and go down there and deal with anything. So, yeah, I'd say latest in the summer, nine-ish, and, you know, probably earlier in the winter on the shorter days.
Thank you. Anything more?
Oh, oh.
Yeah, a couple of things, trying to understand, you, you were talking about some form, form of control over how long your customers are there. I'm presuming that we're talking about electrically operated gates that, that operate with a code. Somebody will pull in, and then after some time period, the gates close again?
Yeah.
And people need a code to get back out?
Either that or...
I didn't see any.
Either that or...
Obvious pedestrian gates or anything.
So, so the vehicular gate will have a code entrance?
Yeah.
And then I imagine, I, I've been thinking just a sensor on the exit, so you get close enough to the gate from the exit and it opens.
Ah, okay.
And then automatic closing.
So you don't have to worry about how long people stay in the evening, really?
No.
They can get out.
They can get out. There's not, I don't have to be there to open and close the facility, although our plan is to be there daily. It's not part of the operations to open every morning at seven and close every night at, at closing. We'll also...
Ah, there is, okay.
We also plan to have security cameras on the property, and technology's pretty good these days. I can get that, those cameras to my phone, so I think, you know, nine o'clock every night.
Your ring systems.
What's that?
About your ring system.
Exactly. You know, take a look, is anybody there, is, you know, does it look like I need to go down there and, and deal with anything? So that's sort of a, one, one approach that, that we have planned.
Okay. I, I had a question about the landscaping as well. As I said, I walked by there again today, and I do about once a week. I did not see any large trees on that property. It seemed to be, as I walked by, it was a pretty clear visual shot right to the fence separating you from the residential property to the north.
Yeah, you're right.
And, and you kind of got two different versions of landscaping here, but they both seem to involve inserting some large trees on the property, which I think is a wonderful thing, but just want you to understand that you are talking about ground disturbance at, at a different level than if you were paving or putting down gravel or DG paths or whatever. And so you will, as you converse with the staff, find out about requirements for when you are doing ground disturbing, whether it's a grading permit or, or talking with the local Indian tribes, Mission Indian tribes, they are, about inadvertent discovery of, of relics and that sort of thing.
Yeah, we, we've already done quite a bit of work with the local geotechnical firm, so we have a really good sense of what's there. And between geotechnical and civil engineering, we have a good sense of what we need to do to, to make it a safe parking lot, a safe, safe drive lanes.
Sure.
There is one tree, there's a, there's a valley oak up front, right on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
It's kind of dead center. So if you'll notice, our, our plans are, are, are way outside of the drip line for that tree. And then the only other tree on the property is in the, the northwest, the back left corner, if you're on the, if you're on the street, and that's a, that's a big pecan tree. And that's tucked so far into the corner, you can see the one parking space.
Shades the neighbors.
What's that?
I say it shades the neighbors.
It does, yeah. There's, there's a, there's a unit on both sides of that corner that I think benefit from that tree. And, you know, the way that we're looking at, at the property is, the more shade creates more comfort, more comfort creates more value. So we're actually very eager to work on, you know, large shrubs, whether it's toions or laurel, and, and, and work with, you know, what makes the most sense as far as large shade trees where, whether it's on the perimeter, or you can see there's the lighter colored sort of fingers that stick out that separate each, each parking spot. So those are gonna, those are gonna be planters. So the space between each parking spot will be all private, it'll have, it'll, it'll be all planted out, and once it's mature, it should feel like you're not really staring at a neighbor on either side or in front of you. And whatever trees we put in there will be, you know, selective, thinking about current and future needs, so.
Okay, yeah. The only, the only thing you're gonna have to worry about is working around that valley oak at the front.
Yeah, no, I've, I've actually put quite a bit of time into, into rehabbing that tree.
Tell you anything you need to know about that, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work with staff, and then also, the, the landscape architect is also an arborist, so as we've been building out the site plan and sharing different ideas as we put it on paper, we've really worked around the needs of, of the trees and, and the future landscaping.
Are all of the, is the entire thing going to be permeable in, it looks like it to me, but I just...
I don't know if I can technically say a hundred percent permeable, but that's the idea. So there, no, no asphalt, no concrete.
Looks like pavers right by the entrance.
Yeah, so where, where we...
But even that can be semi-permeable.
Yeah, and they'll, they will be permeable pavers. So the pavers themselves will be the only surface that isn't a hundred percent permeable, but they will be permeable pavers. And then that's required for the drive entrance that, that you see there, and then you can kind of see how it hooks over into that first parking space. So those pavers will meet ADA access requirements, surface requirements, so that will be our ADA stall. And then from there, you can see that there's a, a direct pathway going out, and then there will be a pedestrian gate right under that oak tree. So we'll have a short fence in the front, I think forty-two inches, whatever code is, forty-two inches.
Forty-eight, yeah.
And that'll have, that'll have a little, a pad on it as well, so you can come and go from there for pedestrian access, and those pavers represent required surfacing for ADA access. And then the plan with the bulk of the drive lanes and parking stalls that aren't ADA will be a gravel surface. And then the perimeter walking path, the plan is to be DG, which is, by the book, is not ADA compliant. However, a, a really crispy, firm ADA walkway, I think, gives a lot of people...
DG with a stabilizer works pretty well.
Yeah, you can get that pretty tight, so...
Doesn't last, though.
What?
It doesn't last.
Requires reapplication of the stabilizer, yes.
Yeah, so that would be the idea, is to pack that in real tight as a walkway, and then either side of the walkway is either, if it's on the property line, that's a required landscape setback. You know, so if you're looking at it from the property line to the west, which is the Ojai Creates, where the art, where the art store is there, they, they will have the required landscape setback plus a DG walkway plus a landscaped island, so almost tripling the required landscape setback for the neighbors. And same on the, on the residential side to the north.
Anything more for the applicant?
No.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
I have two speaker cards for this item. First up, Larry Steingold.
Larry Steingold, Ojai resident. Pleasantly surprised, I was expecting a fifty-five car parking lot with asphalt. Hopefully, your business will make it. I mean, now, that, that's my question. If he can do parking by right, and all the stuff that he wants to do is all very nice, but it's all optional, except for some landscaping, I'm guessing, if, can he convert that to a parking lot by right, like a fifty-five car parking lot? Fifty-car parking lot? Forty-car parking lot? By just clearing out all the stuff except for the valley oak and some other stuff? By right?
The development, the development of the site for a use that is...
Permitting.
That is permitted requires a design review permit, so he couldn't turn around and turn it into a fifty-car parking lot without coming back before the planning commission.
Right, but you could come back and ask for a change.
Right, but you would have no reason to deny it as a parking lot. So my question is, so it could be a parking lot, which would be, I have no problem with either, for buses or cars, and I'm looking down the road because with parking lot problems and the lack of parking for restaurants and what have you, and the parking ratio is required, people are gonna want to have valet parking. And when the lounges get approved, two doors down or five doors down or something, they may need more parking. So this could be a potential future valet parking site because they're not gonna have parking. I just want to know what's coming down the street, so that we're not here discussing all this.
No, no, and, and, and what, what could be legal in the future?
Well, but what's legal now is, this could be a fifty-car parking lot, theoretically.
Well, this is, this is a concept review.
No, no, I understand.
It's not a design review.
I understand, but as a practical matter, the lot's eighteen thousand feet, cars fit three hundred, three hundred and twenty-five feet per space. Theoretically, this could be a paved parking lot with landscaping and...
Theoretically, this could be a paved parking lot with landscaping and all the required...
Fine.
Stall sizes, back outs, drive aisles, and I, I don't think fifty cars could fit in that, but probably more than four.
Right, and that's all I'm saying, I'm just saying...
And that would, yeah, that could be the subject of a future request for a design review.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, like, because if this does, if his business plan doesn't work out, he's gonna have to convert it to something else, and parking lot is the low-hanging fruit, so make it a parking lot and call it a day.
May I ask a question, though? I mean, your, your question sounded as if you were saying, well, is this a nose under the tent? And somehow...
Not, not really, because you can already do a parking lot by right now, correct?
But, well, that, and the second step is gonna require the same process.
Right.
So I don't see...
But you can't prohibit somebody from doing something that they can do by right, like a parking lot.
Yeah, I'm just, what I'm saying is, I thought you were going after that if we approve a parking lot now, can you expand it to something else? And the answer is you could expand it to anything else that passed the planning commission at the time of the design review.
Why, I understand. I'm just looking at predictable consequences of having parking ratios that make no sense and then approving a business that needs to have to go get a parking lot. You, you're...
But it's not a predictable, if you approve it.
If I could, if I could just step...
We're not making any decision or approving anything tonight.
Thank you, and on top of that, we're having more of a cross-conversation with...
Sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Questions, yes.
It's not a nose under the tent, it's just...
Counter-questions, deliberation, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Next up is Bill Miley.
For the record, my name is Bill Miley. I have more of a, bigger question about whether this is appropriate in a downtown area which is open to the public. People go in, people come out. See, I, I, when I looked at it and read about it, I, I looked for parking spaces, if this was to be a parking lot, and didn't see many, and apparently there are eight, and there's walking paths, it looks more like a nature preserve with a few parking spots. And it's gated. So I'm thinking that this is a gated community, which we don't like in Ojai, and we've worked hard in the past to stop the, let's roll these things from being gated. So that's kind of what I'm looking at. Sounds like it's a gated community, so I have some questions and comments, about ten of them. I'll hold glasses. What's the zoning? I didn't get what's the zoning.
Zoning is C1 all through there.
Okay. This is a, number two is, this is a business community. People go in, it's a public community. Three, it seems like this is a gated community, offering access to certain people and keeping other people out. Four, this is a conclusion of my part, it doesn't seem appropriate for downtown. And I would summarize it by saying, it's a private gated business with eight parking spaces and walking trails, but it's not open to the public. It's, doesn't seem appropriate, it doesn't seem to be belong there in a, in our business downtown. And I have a, I just wrote these, so. It seems like it's a privileged spot. You have certain privileges because you pay for it, and you can get in, and other people can't, most people can't. Doesn't sound good to me. You have four main parking places and you have four additional. It's not really a parking lot, it's a place to go and sit in the trees and bushes, it seems like. It's more of a nature preserve, which is kind of nice in a way. I think the question needs to be, what's the impact on the overall community? It's fenced, it's gated. How to control the people who are gonna jump over the fence at, late at night? Are there gonna be lights at night? I would raise the question of how possibly can become a nuisance factor, homeless people climbing over? And I guess the last thing, and I've said it before, is, seems like a gated community, it's not appropriate for downtown. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Is there anyone else here present who wishes to speak on this item? Sherry, is there anyone in the waiting room with a raised hand?
No.
All right. Then we are going to close the period of public comment and come back to deliberations. Just the three of us tonight.
Simple.
Madam Commissioner, what do you think?
Well, I really like the idea of having a little nature preserve right downtown. I don't really understand the business model of four places bringing in sufficient income, but that's really not our business, so I'll let that one... but that's really not our business, so I'll let that one go. It will be dark at night, Mr. Miley, so, um, I don't have a problem with that. Whether people climb over the fence or not is, well, there'll be security cameras. So I think if there's any problem, the applicant will deal with that. So I guess I'm here to say I support it.
Mr. Bennett?
Um, you know, my, the issues that Mr. Miley raises are, are interesting. I first looked at it and so, so thought of it as a motel without any rooms. Um, and the issue of public access, well, the public doesn't have access to the hotel rooms or motel rooms in town. So I, I, that, that piece of it does not bother me, that people are, are paying some money for privacy. So the issues raised by Mr. Steingold are not my issues. Um, actually, my issue is a strange one, and that is setbacks. You know, I think this, this, we, um, have to figure out, do we see an extended commercial street there where the setbacks are going to be determined by the one building that's there currently? The, um, the building, it was an art supply, um, building, um, or not? And I've disclosed this before, I was an investor in, um, uh, Ojai Roti. And, uh, Ojai Roti's, um, original fence lined up with the building next to it, where Duchess is now. Um, but that fence went away, um, and the city, we, required, um, a setback, which was not established by the facades of the building, um, that was, um, that was immediately adjacent to it, but it was, it was further back from the sidewalk than the, the line of the building faces.
A no-longer-grandfathered, do-it-by-the-code kind of situation.
Well, there is one, there's one post there that may, I always sort of, I don't know how all this was done at the time, when I was not involved. But, um, I, you know, and I found myself thinking, I'm not sure, in all instances, that setbacks are of value, and we tend to, as a community, not only Ojai, but all the design community, treats, uh, you know, if you, if you're required to have an X, you know, ten-foot setback, a twenty-foot setback is twice as good for the community's standpoint. Well, you know, that is unless you're trying to establish an urban fabric, where you have a set of facades that aren't going in and out, but are, allow you to stroll down the boulevard and look in and see the merchandise and other things that are inside the window. Um, and, uh, so I, I am apprehensive about a big setback, because it's, it's non, it isn't commercial. Um, and even though theoretically commerce is being, um, done here, in that they're gonna be charging, um, if you're the, if you're the art supply, um, shop, this, the, the, I'm sorry, if you're the, if, if you are on the...
That's the east side where the gas station is.
I'm sorry, this is the east of it.
This is the west side where the art supply is, yeah.
At the moment, the street stops at the gas station as a pedestrian zone. Um, in other words, there's a, there's a big setback there to the island where the pumps are. But it stops being really ineffective. People turn around when they get up to this point. And if there is a hope by the city that at some point this lot gets filled with commerce, um, meaning a, a building which has a public coming and going, um, by creating a setback like this, we give up on that. Um, and since this is a comp, you know, you're just looking for feedback. This is not a, a situation where we're gonna approve or not approve anything.
Yeah.
That's my, that's my feedback. I would have preferred to see, in, in a space like this, something that lined up with the facades of the buildings. And I think that the gas stations, frankly, all should be further away from the pedestrian commerce that we have. I think that, 'cause the people do, they get up to that gas station, they turn around and head back. You feel it's all over now. Even though there are a handful of, of businesses up there further up. But it's like a, there's like a, it's like a, a smile missing teeth, you know? People don't wanna go all the way up there anymore, 'cause it's, it's not a complete street further up, because of gas stations, so... Now, by the way, there were twenty-one gas stations in Ojai at one point. It's one of the reasons we have problems, real estate problems here. 'Cause if you go around and start looking at, you know...
Ojai Roti was one of them.
Ojai Roti was one of them, Bokalies was one of them. They're, they're, so the history of the town has got problems in terms of its physical design caused by the setbacks of the, the fuel pumps that were there when the twenty-one gas stations were there in town. You know, the Mob Shop was a, was a gas station.
Well, part of that's a gas station.
I didn't know that.
Yes.
But so you, but you can, once you know there's twenty-one, you get, it's a little, little game you can play. Let's go around and see how many of the twenty-one we can identify. But they, they all can cause a setback problem. And the, the, nobody going into urban design would design a, a city street where the setbacks move back and forth. So we'll be ending the street here, uh, with, with this design. And we have to ask ourselves, is this where we wanna end the street?
I can speak to that from a design standpoint.
Please come back up, sir. Yeah, please.
So we've actually addressed that issue. Um, you know, without a building up front, the setback is sort of a gray area. But if you look at the site plan, um, the, the front fence, uh, that's as close, that's on, that's on the setback line. So that's as close to the street as we can get it. Um, and the plan for the front of that fence, for both sides of the fence, is to be very robust landscaping. So we very much intend for the whole, uh, except for the driveway, the whole Ojai Avenue-facing property line to be really robust landscaping, beautiful garden, and the intention is really to walk by and have it be really engaging. Something that you're like, what is this? What's going on in here? Uh, this is really beautiful. And then in the code, there's some other language, I think it's in the East End Design Guidelines, where they actually wanna pres, and correct me if I'm wrong, but wanna preserve sightlines to the natural spaces in Ojai. So we've actually, the conversation we've had is, if you're walking by on Ojai Avenue, really beautiful fence line with cactus and native plants, and then the landscaping would be such that it never blocks your view of the mountains. So you'd both be walking by the property, engaged with the landscaping there, and not lose your view of the mountains in the pink moment. So the idea is for it really...
Oh, the pink moment's over there, but...
Well, it, I think, a little bit of both. It's kind of, kind of a nice view up there. But, um, that's really the plan, and, and as, as far as a business goes, it's in our best interest to create as much curb, curb appeal as we possibly can. Um, so that's actually going to be a really robust street side. And, um, you know, without a building, we're doing the best we can to, to represent our business on Main Street there.
Could you tell us more about what kind of an entrance gate you're planning to use?
Well, we wanna, um, the design guidelines, I think, prefer to tap in a little bit more to the ranch or rural aspect of the East End, and then use, um, that space on Ojai Avenue to sort of blend downtown into the rural aspect. And so, um, in the rear residential side of the property, we're required by code to have a block wall. So it'll be a six-foot block wall, white stucco to match downtown. Uh, and then on the gas station property line and along the front, we're gonna do a wooden shadow box fence, which is just a typical wooden fence. But instead of one side, sorry, one side being smooth and, and the opposite side showing the framing of the fence, it's, uh, the boards are opposite each other. So there's airflow, and it's actually for, for, for the native animals, there's, critters can get in and out of there. So instead of sort of sealing off the property, uh, we're doing the best we can to sort of, you know, address issues of, of, you know, people hanging out there that shouldn't be by having fences, but then also building a wooden fence that references that rural character, brings it into downtown. There's a, um, on, on the, on the one you're looking at there, Commissioner Murphy, on the bottom left, there's an elevation plan, and you're just trying to see what we're going for there. So along the Ojai Avenue, uh, property line, it'll be forty-two inches.
Right.
And then six feet, uh, on the gas station side. We kinda wanna block out the gas station.
Are those gates also six feet?
Uh, the vehicular gate?
Yes.
Um, that is to be determined. What we, we'll do whatever's required there. Um, there was some back and forth between the required, um, trash enclosure, and whether it looks better to kinda keep that, uh, elevation coming across on the fence, or to lower it. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm not attached to it one way or the other, if everybody decided one was better than the other for town.
Okay. Uh, for staff, I know that the height limitation on a front yard, front setback fence in a residential area is forty-eight inches. Is it forty-two in a commercial zone?
No, it's forty-eight.
It is forty-eight, okay.
Uh, wrong, sorry.
So you can go up to forty-eight?
I'll take the six inches.
Yeah. Okay, any, any other...
No.
Interchange with the applicant? Thank you very much, sir. Okay. You've given us some thoughts, you've given us some thoughts. I'm still curious how the business is going to work, but I think it's a very nice-looking project. Um, you have to keep track of ground disturbance and stay close to the staff to know where, where the code requirements are gonna be every step of the way. Um, other than that, I think it's a fine idea. It's, it's unusual, maybe unique, for Ojai to have paid parking, but it's a common enough thing in most cities. Uh, we don't have any parking meters here, but we could. No reason not to.
Don't even, don't even suggest that.
From a legal sense, I don't see any prohibitions. At any rate, um, my question for you, sir, would be, do you feel like you've gotten the feedback that you need from the commission on this concept review?
Um, I don't have any specific questions, but I, you know...
Can you come back to the podium, please?
If, if there are any other things that, that are just kinda swimming around there, and you're wondering, what's gonna happen if I start this project? Or come back for a design review permit? Uh, if those questions are percolating right now, we'll do our best to answer them and, and give you some feedback. That's why we're here tonight.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. Uh, but like I said, I've been coming to these meetings, almost all of them, for the last eighteen months. And I feel like that site plan is a direct result of better understanding your needs and the city's code requirements, and really the community's likes and dislikes. So, um, I feel like I've gone pretty deep into the code and, uh, community planning.
Staff is always helpful there.
They've been amazing and guided me, you know, when I needed a little bit of guidance. And, uh, I'm actually very optimistic and confident that, that it's a good plan and meets all of the town's requirements, and keeps the neighbors happy. And hopefully, we'll, uh, we'll beautify and improve Main Street. It's been a dirt lot.
It will do that. This is not an attractive parcel at the moment, for sure.
Yeah, so that, that's the plan, was just to improve it. And, uh, you know, I'm not a, I'm not your typical developer. I don't build retail or, or, or bigger, bigger developments. And so I thought this was something that, that would work for everybody, and, and, uh, an interesting approach to that parcel there downtown, so...
Okay.
I appreciate the feedback. Any, any big red flags? I'd love to hear them, 'cause, you know, it's...
I don't see any. Hope, hope the business works for you, because I would like to see that parcel developed, for sure.
Great, thank you.
It would be much more attractive than, than the empty lot that we have right now.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you again, sir. Let's move on to item two, future agenda items.
That's me. Hi. Okay, so for future agenda items, we have for September sixth, the appeal for the director's decision, decision to deny the request for a gas meter on a vacant lot for new construction. It's the single-family ADU, junior ADU, um, piece for four oh one, East Topa Topa. This'll be the third time that this will be coming back to the commission. And as you recall, when this was discussed a few months back, September was the, kind of the, the target point. So that's what we're shooting for right now. Um, and that is, so then on pending, we have two other items. I didn't put them on for the twentieth, only because we're close, but they're not, they're not there yet. I've only identified two. We have probably, I was just doing kind of a round number count, more than ten applications that are in that will be before this body at some point.
Lesser degrees of completeness, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yes. Most, in fact, all of them are out on corrections right now, so incomplete at this point. So we've left the twentieth open. However, there's a good chance that if one of these items aren't ready, we're gonna have something more than likely regarding the housing element to talk about. Um, and I'll talk more about the housing element, uh, when I have an opportunity during the directors' reports.
Okay? Any questions?
Um, the item, the design review per, permit, affordable housing project, is this the same label that's been used previously for this item? Have we, has it, has it been on the pending list like this? And did it change its label?
Yeah, no, it's, it's pending. I mean, the reality...
No, it isn't, the question's not about, is it pending or not pending? The question is, has the word affordable always been in there?
I'm assuming so. It's a, it's a hun, it's a one-hundred percent affordable housing project, so yes.
Has been, and...
Oh, yeah.
...labeled such.
Absolutely.
All right.
Since the very beginning, preliminary discussions.
Right. Okay.
Uh, two, I, I just have one, one request. I, well, two, I guess. I'd like some clarification. There was mention at the city council meeting last night, and, and you mentioned it at our last meeting, that we had received approval by the HCD of our housing element.
I will reserve that for director's comments.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Um, secondly, I would like to suggest that if we have openings like this, that there are, I think it was nineteen different programs within the housing element, that we share responsibility for implementation with staff. And just getting a general idea of where we are on, on the ones that are already started, and what's not yet already started. And in particular, what HCD, I guess, and, and the city expects of the planning commission in terms of our contribution to implementing those plans.
Absolutely, so...
We could fill that in anytime there isn't something else going on.
Yeah, to be, to be fair, even if there isn't a current project, meaning these projects that you're seeing here on the pending list, those are considered current projects, projects that have specific applications. Even if those items aren't ready, um, the housing element has several items that need to be and require this body's attention, as well as staff's attention, so... I don't see us canceling any meetings in the foreseeable future.
Good.
Even if there aren't current projects that are ready...
And even if we take one program per meeting, we'll get through it in the space of a year.
Exactly, yeah, it's a balancing act. It's not uncommon with every city.
Um, along that line...
Please go ahead.
As you, you may remember, 'cause I've spoken about it before, the concern that I have about diminishment of any of the Bryant Street area, which is our only manufacturing area in town. Um, does this three-twenty involve, the, the three-twenty Bryant Street involve, um, the change of, of use and zoning?
No, it's, without going into a whole lot of detail, this site is an overlay site, which allows for affordable housing as an overlay. I can go into more detail on what an overlay allows for, and what it doesn't allow for, and the parameters in which you can operate a, an overlay, when this item comes forward. I don't want to get into the details of the site, okay?
No, 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 I'm not asking you to do that. Because what I was thinking is, we have more than one housing, um, issue on Bryant Street. I say issue, um, if I'm not mistaken, there's another-
There's only one site that is an overlay along Bryant Street.
Didn't say overlay. I said that there's, there's more than one-
There are some single-family residences-
Housing-
On Bryant, yes.
There's, in the queue, I'm saying-
Oh, in the queue, I'm not sure of any. There are single-family residences there.
Existing, yes.
Long, long time existing.
So there are no other, um, there are no other projects that have been, been given to you all to, to look at, um, that involve how, the conversion of a manufacturing area into a housing area, with the exception of this one?
If we're talking about along Bryant Street or Bryant Circle, this is the only-
Bryant Street, Bryant Circle, the area-
Yeah, this would be the only project that's in-
It's the only one that's been brought up?
Correct.
Okay, so-
That has an official application, it's being processed.
I was thinking, if we had more than one, we could, we might want to look at that issue separately from the individual project. But if we're not, then might as well look at it all together. Okay, thank you.
Terrific. Okay. Our subcommittees are kind of operating with one hand tied behind their back right now, so.
I would say that the affordable housing is on hold, pending.
Well, it's, it's a community issue, whether there's a, a subcommittee or not.
That's true.
But I, I would suggest at some point that we may, since we do have a parking and a housing subcommittee authorized, that we may want to look at restaffing them, since our now-absent commissioner was part of each one.
So when, under director reports, I'll, I'll be mentioning something about that as well.
Terrific, okay. Anything else, then? Let's go to director's report.
All right. So, a couple of things. One is, um, on August tenth, the city received a Department of Housing and Community Development, um, letter from the state, which is HCD. In that letter, it identifies that the city is now substantially compliant with, um, with the regulations for the sixth cycle. So our housing element is now substantially compliant.
It is now certified?
For, it doesn't say certified, it says substantially compliant. So if you look at our website, or their website, um, in compliance versus out of compliance, we are now in compliance. I was looking for certification, instead, we have a specific phrase that says, uh, "HCD is pleased to find the adopted housing element in substantial compliance with state housing element law." And that identifies various programs that we will be going through. Two, four, six, eight of those nineteen programs that we have within our housing element are referenced specifically, um, to bring us into compliance with state law. So what that means is that now we can actually start doing that good work of implementing these programs at various levels. Some of these will be coming to this body, some of them will be handled at staff level. At a future meeting, potentially as early as September twentieth, we'll be discussing those in more detail. Um, we've brought those forward a couple different times, just to say, hey, look, these are the ones that we think are going to end up getting, um, adopted and approved by HCD for us to move forward. Now we have that official kind of rubber stamp saying, move forward with these, you're good to go.
But the letter says, in effect, is, we're not going to ask you to make any more changes to the housing element, like how?
Yeah, absolutely not, yeah. Nope.
Okay.
No more changes. So we're, we're good moving forward. So our sixth cycle, after two and a half years of going back and forth with HCD, we have finally reached the point where we can say, let's move forward with these programs. Additionally, uh, because of what happened last night, the decisions that were made, we now have, um, subcommittees, and we have something referred to as Kappa, which is for the Arts Committee, or Arts Commission, that are, um, that need to be filled. So there's positions that the, the planning commission have an obligation to be a part of. So the, the commission typically, um, when, when those positions come up and, and are vacant, if someone leaves, we find and fill those positions. CAP is one of those. Um, we also have subcommittees that now only have one member. So I've already talked to staff, we're gonna be bringing forward an item for discussion, and we're gonna cover all of the, all the pieces that, that need to be covered and addressed.
Okay.
Um, Arts Commission is one, um, the housing piece is another. Parking committee, I recall there being one member, right? That would probably need to be discussed as well. I'll have to go back and look at the record on that one.
Had two, now it has one.
Now it has one, so. We'll have, all in all, I'm seeing three or four different committees and, and action groups that, that this body is a part of, so.
Okay, good.
We'll have that in the staff report in the future. Likely on the twentieth, um, since there's no noticing, uh, it's at the leisure of the commission. And other than that, that's, that's all I have. Um, there's a lot going on right now for CDD, but we are, we're keeping our head afloat. We've flown a position for an associate planner position, and we'll be interviewing for that in the coming weeks. So that'll be covering the advanced planning stuff, um, housing element, certainly. The previous planner was here and moved on to a different city. Alex, he was doing that, and we were seeing him fit into that role. He ended up moving on to another city. So we're gonna find someone else. There's somebody else out there, we'll find him.
Okay.
And that's it, that's it on my end.
Thank you very much. Uh, any commissioners have reports? All right. Our city council liaison, I don't think we ever, uh, formally met your friend there.
Yes, Willow.
Willa?
Willow, Willow, like Willow's.
Willow, all right.
Or Willow the movie. So she, she's, this is her first outing into any public, really, any public forum. So I think she's done pretty good, all things considered. Yeah, so council, uh, council report, as you know, uh, we had, a vote was taken, um, yesterday, that, uh, so you are now down, uh, one member. Um, I am trying to get clarity, because it's very confusing on how, uh, the next member will be, uh, selected. Uh, the protocols document is different than the ordinance, so, um, we're, I'm trying to get clarity on that, to find out how that actually works. And since in the ordinance, it's district, uh, specific, only the last time that we had the census, that we redistricted, um, you know, somehow Ryan and both Ryan Blatts and Bill Wirick ended up in District One. So, we, you know, um-
And the district numbers have been changed in terms of their general geographic locations, you know?
Right, so even though it says there's this order, I, it doesn't say if a commissioner is removed, i- it's all confusing, and I don't know how that's gonna play out. Um, but I, I, I expect to find out. I did, uh, send an email to both the city attorney and the interim city manager on asking for clarification on that. I hope to get that. As far as your, uh, parking and your ad hoc, uh, affordable housing subcommittee, um, you know, to me, both of those are really important. I know that, no, you're not, no, go, but it's the goal. I know that there was, uh, some, uh, indication with the parking committee that, uh, there would be an ordinance around valet parking or some sort of compromise, and I think that we're working on that. That was, I don't know that that was, that was two of you in a larger group, right? Oh, I'm sorry, two of you in a larger group. So, um, we'll figure out sort of how that's gonna fly.
Have there been more minutes or meetings of that group?
Not that I know of, um, but I'm not-
Not that I know of either.
Yeah, I'm not-
I was at one, yeah.
But, but I know that there has been some sort of compromise, well, you would know better than I, I think a compromise, um, ordinance was, uh, at least discussed. I don't know how far along it is in, um, in actuality. So there's that. Trying to think, um, yes, very good, on the housing element. Um, and you had a discussion with HCD today, is that correct, or no?
No, not today.
Okay. Are you, you were going to have one in the near future?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay, very good. And as you know, uh, the Becker Development Agreement has been pulled, and, um, they are now applying, uh, so, um, they are, as, as I understand it, they're applying separately now on all four parcels. I think two of them, they're going for the, the exceptions that they were looking for, but that is no longer, so that lawsuit is, is no longer, uh, happening.
I understood there were, excuse me, I understood there were now five parcels involved.
Oh, yes, you're correct, there are now five parcels. Yes, that is correct, there are now five parcels. So that'll be, that'll be very interesting, to see how that flies.
So will that come back before us? I mean, will the five individual pub-
If, if it's a new application dealing with a single parcel, I would think it would.
Look, I, I can't give any sort of details, because we're still poring through the information that was provided just recently.
Yeah, I would just add that, you know, the city attorney's office is also looking, because this was a, um, there's a referendum that was put on the ballot as well. So we're, we're analyzing whether the city council needs to adopt a resolution pulling that, or what the process is for that as well.
Right.
One, one wonders if that referendum is moot at this point.
Right, it would seem a little silly, um, for it to move forward if the developer doesn't want to go forward with it. But there's, there's a process for, um, if the proponents want to withdraw generally, but, um, we're looking to see if there's a process also for one being just moot, that's sketched out in statute at least.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's a confusing situation. I'm assuming that, you know, more legal minds than mine will figure out what the next best steps are. I think it's an interesting, uh, conundrum. It's an interesting step that has occurred now. Uh, this is never-ending, um, just keeps continuing. Uh, and, um, yes, so we are still trying to, uh, get updates on the Bryant Street project, you know, and, and figuring out how and where that's going to go. You know, we'll, we'll see how it goes. Uh, I encourage, once again, everybody to look to SB six-four-nine for affordable housing that prioritizes, uh, at-risk, low-income, uh, low-income renters who are at risk of displacement due to gentrification, i.e., uh, you know, their places get bought and they get booted out. So they have first priority, and I keep, uh, pushing on that. It is on, it is on our agenda, uh, it is on our priority list, which we are going to, we have, I think, thirty-six items on our priority list, uh, that we're going to prioritize, and that will be one of them. Try to get that moving.
I'm, I'm hoping that corrections to Title X are somewhere on that list of thirty-six.
You know, I went through Title X today, because I was trying to figure out how replacement commissioners, uh, are, are bet, you know, how that, that process happens.
That's another part of Title X, yes.
Yes, yes, so, um, I, with, the last time that you, we spoke, you had mentioned Title X. Um, and, and I will definitely check, and if it's not, I, I will add it on, I know, right? Let's do it, baby girl. So I think that's, that's it for, uh, my, um, liaison report. I want to thank you very much, Commissioner Quilisi, for your comments last night, um, for showing up and, uh, taking a stand on how, and, and of course, Judy, you have shown up many times. It might be that more commissioners and will start showing up and, you know, voicing opinions on the ways in which, because we, we are gonna have to revamp how commissions are chosen and things like that. So, that will, that's also on our priorities list.
Excellent, excellent.
Uh, that's really all I have to say. If anyone has any questions for me, I'm happy to, happy to answer them.
Still stunned.
Yeah, I know. It's pretty stunning. But it is, you know, three votes will get you anything.
Yeah.
That's what we need to understand. That's what the voters need to understand, three votes, and I can turn off the lights in Ojai. I can call the sky green.
Or pretty much anything else.
Anything else, you know? Anything else. And until you understand how that works, and I don't think a lot of people do, um, it's just gonna be what it's gonna be. So, yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome very much, thank you.
I did have one just final question, and I think this is, this is probably for legal. Uh, now that, now that we have the housing element approved, whatever that means, um, there, there has been talk recently that I've heard about SB three-thirty and builders' remedies, uh, and I believe that the applicability of that, or the potential outcomes of implementing that, have changed now that we have an approved housing element, is that right? Could you give us twenty-five words on that?
Sure, and, and Lucas can help me out here if he wants, but, um, the city's position has been, despite the fact that HD, HCD had only deemed the city's housing element substantially compliant, um, this week, um, or, or last week, that, uh, the city was still legally substantially compliant, um, because the statute doesn't say that HCD must determine that it's substantially compliant. So that's, that was the city's position, that is the city's position. So, uh, we're, we're very glad, ecstatic about HCD's-
Sure.
-certification or deeming substantially compliant, um, but we still believe that, um, the housing element was legally compliant, um, and met all the standards necessary to, uh, make the builder's remedy inapplicable before then.
Okay, so, so the builder's remedy, the city's position is the builder's remedy is no longer-
No longer applicable.
Feasible.
Correct, and, and wasn't as well, because the city's housing element, despite HCD not yet getting there, was still legally compliant with all the standards that the state law requires that housing elements have maintained.
Uh, okay, okay. Very good. Any other questions for staff? Great, then there be no, being no other obvious business before the commission at seven-twenty-eight, we're adjourned.